For the pledge of allegiance, Councilor Lorenz will lead us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Judy, would you call first, please? Councilor Lorenz.
Here.
Councilor Schleba.
Here.
Councilor Martinez.
Here.
Councilor Schrader.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
We have a forum with everyone present. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda.
I approve the consent agenda.
Any other discussion? Judy? Schleba.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Lorenz.
Aye.
Garcia. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have proclamations, communications, and appointments. We have our new police chief, Evan Lopez. Can you square him? Help, please.
Where'd he go? Oh, there he is.
He's back there in the corner, hiding from the camera.
He got it out the back door.
All right. Well, we're very happy that you all came here tonight to see Chief Evan Lopez sworn in as the Mona Vista Police Department Chief. So we'll make it simple. Very happy to have you onboard as a chief. And all we have to do is this little piece here. So, repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I, Evan Lopez.
I, Evan Lopez.
Do solemnly swear or affirm under the penalty of perjury.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm under.
Penalty of perjury.
Penalty of perjury.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America.
And laws of the United States of America.
And of the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Mona Vista.
And the city of Mona Vista.
And the county of Rio Grande.
And the county of Rio Grande.
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform the duties.
Of chief of police.
Of chief of police.
For the city of Mona Vista.
For the city of Mona Vista.
In the county of Rio Grande.
In the county of Rio Grande.
To which I have been appointed.
Which I have been appointed.
And upon which I am about to enter.
And upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, sir. Don't hurt him.
Try not to.
Chief, would you, the council, stand for picture?
We'd definitely like a picture, and then we'd also like one with all the officers.
Chief, would you, the council, stand for picture?
We'd definitely like a picture, and then we'd also like one with all the officers. Officers, do you want to come up with this? We'll get one with all of you guys, and then we'll let you guys do one together.
What do you want?
All people in the back. All people in the back. On the back.
It's good to see you. It's good to see you, Charlie's sister. I haven't seen you.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda is special presentations and citizens' comments. We have Carla Shire here.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I can't really be Carla, but I'll pretend. So, this is a sign everybody saw last year in our community. And essentially, what Carla was doing as her position on the Rio Grande watershed emergency action coordination team, or REACT, is asking the city to allow these signs to be posted starting next couple of weeks through the end of the holiday season in public right of ways, in public parks, those kind of things, as well as on private residence is an issue. But we did allow this last year. There's also a banner, which I don't have, I think you all remember, on orange banner, which has to prominently display at Malfunction Junction. And I think staff would certainly recommend this. I think it was a good campaign last year, and it's really pretty neat that they're doing this. And I hope the council will approve the request to do this this year. Thanks.
The one thing, of course, if you could just mention to Carla that we had had some discussion after last year's signs not to put them in the memorial park.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
That was the only concern I had.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now it's time for citizens' comments. Is there anyone this evening that would like to address council?
I have something.
Okay, we're asking that you go to the podium, and please state your name for the record and.
Margot Alexander. And I just want to comment on the wonderful job that the city is doing with the trees. Thank you, Rob. It has been across the street from me, they have been working on these two horrible trees. They look beautiful, and I've seen it all through town, and I just want to comment and thank you, thank you, thank you. Tell everybody that you're doing a wonderful job. Good.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to address citizens? We'll move on to liquor license renewals. We have the renewal of the club license for the Mona Vista Elks Lodge, number 2456, doing business as the Mona Vista Elks Club. And I think in their packet, it shows that all paperwork's in, complete, and the recommendation is for.
Make a motion to approve the renewal of the club liquor license for Mona Vista Elks Lodge, number 2456, doing business as Mona Vista Elks Club.
Second. Any other discussion? Judy? Martinez.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Lorenz.
Aye.
Schleba.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on to ordinances. We have our second and final reading and adoption of ordinance 874 to the ordinance of the city of Mona Vista, amending Article IV on our cross-connection control of Chapter 10 and the utilities section of the Mona Vista Municipal Code. And so I know you're here doing the school project, so we'll just kind of, are you here for class? Yeah. So we have to upgrade our code to allow for shut-off valves, especially commercial businesses. That's, I don't know if Rob wants to go into more detail, but it's.
Yeah, the state's mandated that the city, any public water supply system, has to have what they call cross-connection and backflow prevention. And basically, what that is, is a device that prevents people from being able to overpressure our water system and pump something bad, like antifreeze or something else, that's a hazard, into the system and therefore contaminating the entire system. So the way the rule reads right now is it's all commercial businesses must install at a minimum double-check backflow preventer on all commercial businesses. It's set up depending on the severity of the hazard that could be, you know, potential, somebody that has a little sandwich shop that's real small isn't a huge, or as big a hazard as a full-blown out of motor repair shop. So, that's what the rule is in a nutshell.
Mr. Council?
I move to approve ordinance number 874, an ordinance of the city of Mona Vista, Colorado, amending Article IV cross-connection control of Chapter 10 Utilities of the Mona Vista Municipal Code.
Second. Any other discussion? Judy? Schrader.
Aye.
Lorenz.
Aye.
Schleba.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we are on to contracts, agreements, and leases. We have in our packets the bids for the heavy equipment.
Okay, first, please forgive my attire. Once I get my use of my arm back, I'll dress a little more appropriately. But anyways, before you tonight is the actual bid award for the 2016 heavy equipment bid. We went out to bid to four of the major heavy equipment manufacturers, Power Motive, Case, John Deere, and Caterpillar. We requested bids on three machines, motor grater, loader, that has a quick attachment so it can not only do just a regular loader bucket that you're used to seeing, but also forks, future endeavors, possibly a plow, those things, try to make it a little more versatile. And the last machine is kind of our bread and butter, the backhoe. We received four bids back, three of which were actual bids, and one no bid from Power Motive. They couldn't meet my original specs of having an all-wheel-drive machine for the motor grater, and that's primarily for snow removal and ice cutting. We evaluated the three bids that we got based on several things, not only price, but also the way they perform, the way the machines have warranties that were available, and just overall customer satisfaction. This is a long-term purchase for the city. We're anticipating those machines lasting us for the next 20 years. Viewing all of that, my recommendation to council is to go with Wagner Equipment for three CAT pieces of machinery. They are as follows: a CAT 12M 3 all-wheel-drive motor grater for $231,000, a CAT 420F four-wheel-drive backhoe for $108,750, and a CAT 926M wheel loader that has both the bucket and the forks, and a QuickConnect for $138,500. For a total finance package, which you guys approved last meeting, of $479,250. This will be financed through a 10-year municipal lease, seven years or 5,000 hours, whichever comes first. The machine is covered under what they call a governmental warranty, bumper-to-bumper, at no cost to the city. So, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Motion carries unanimously.
To award the 2016 heavy equipment bid to Wagner Equipment for the purchase of a 12M motor grater, a 420F backhoe, and a 926M wheel loader for the total sum of $479,250.0 and authorize the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with SLV Federal.
Second.
Any other discussion? Judy? Schleba.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Lorenz.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to reports, we have the city manager's report.
This time, I am Forrest Norberg, city manager. I don't have any cool things to show you. To clarify something which I did send to the council, and the employees have as well, we will not be closing at 11:30 on the 10th. For Veterans Day, we'll only be closed on the Friday. Part of that came about, we have a past practice of doing that, but I was working with Courtney Baker, our new HR manager, and we kind of looked through the policies and were like, hmm, not quite sure how that came about. So anyway, I apologize for telling the council it was that way, but it is actually just the holiday. This is a strange holiday year, particularly Christmas this year. Christmas Eve is on Saturday, Christmas is on Sunday. So the city will actually be closed all day Friday and all day Monday, which is what the policy says. We've done it a little different in the past, but we will be consistent. Courtney and I went through the holiday schedule for all of next year, and it now squares up with our policy. I think that that was the majority of my report. Oh, thank you, Mayor Protem Schrader, for participating today. We did interview two people for the finance director, and I believe that we have a winner. We still have to do background checks and such, but they were good interviews. Thank you, Rob, as well, for participating. We had a nice opposing five-member panel, which also included Debbie Phillips and Courtney. So, good interviews. I think we had, Courtney developed some really good questions that we have not utilized primarily before for the city, and they were good interviews. They were very interesting, and I appreciate the panel's work on it, and I think we have a winner. So, if that's the case, after we do the backgrounds, it'll probably be three or four weeks before that person could start. And I'll tell you her name after we finalize that. Other than that, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, or that's all I have. All right, thank you.
Our city attorney's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So, a lot of what we have been doing is getting into court with the cleanup issues. The Trujillo case, Mike Trujillo, owner of some property, I've been, I've consulted with Justin, our code enforcement officer. He assures me that that has all been completed now with that cleanup, and so we will be moving to terminate that case as finished and accomplished its purpose. We still have the Chris Young case pending with motions that gravitated into a disorderly conduct situation over the cleanup, and so we've got motions pending on that, which would be heard next week. The Michael Gaultier's case, in speaking with Justin, nothing has really been done in the way of cleanup on that, despite continued efforts to get him to clean that up. So we will be going to a trial setting on that case. We, Forrest and Justin and myself, will be meeting in the first part of next week on the railroad issue. We kind of, Forrest wanted to be part of that discussion, and to map out, since we've got several things on that particular issue, the weeds, the cars, the old buildings, houses, dilapidated structures, and so forth, so we will be meeting to try to develop a schedule on that, and then get back to the council on what we've come up with. I mentioned in my 1018 memo to you that I was working on a draft ordinance concerning the caregiver situation, and Joe and I had been discussing this back and forth a little bit. So I knocked out a preliminary draft. It's probably more of talking points than actually trying to get it into any kind of ordinance form so that we could come forward to you then with some suggestions of where we want to go. And we're talking about the number of plants that are allowable to caregivers, especially in residential areas, and how we can confine that. We've looked at ordinances that have been developed in several places in the state, Breckenridge, Parachute, places like that, and we've come up with some model provisions concerning the confinement of that to the interior of residences, and what is necessary so that you don't have obvious odors coming, and also the confinement of the number of plants. So we're working on that. Let's see. I, even though we have sent out to Charter a franchise, and we've also sent out the, them a questionnaire that we're doing to the public, I have not received back any, I received back an acknowledgement that they had received our materials, and they said they would be getting back to us. We sent that out to them, I believe, on the 18th of October. We have not heard back from them at this point in time on the franchise. So I assume that we will, because they have replied to us consistently all the way through. Finally, I sent out to the council, before I had to leave, a memo on signage and the Gilbert case, which I'm sure is probably as confusing to most of you as it is to most attorneys, but trying to set forth what we know about that case and where it's going before we get to the planning commission, looking hard at what we have got to do to modify some of our signage, and I think we have a few things in there. I think most of our code looks pretty good on that issue. So I think it's probably more of a thing of tweaking our code with a few issues there than anything. Does council have any questions?
Did you say you had sent out surveys to the residents?
I have not sent those surveys out. I sent that to Charter, and Forrest was going to develop a protocol for how those surveys were going to go out, I believe.
I was just adding.
No, you will.
Okay.
Well, and honestly, Mayor, they'll be, we're not going to send them to every customer. Actually, they won't disclose their list to us by federal law, but we will probably send out 150 of them, somewhat random, and then if we don't get a good sample size back, we'll do another batch.
Any other?
Just like to clarify real quick on the marijuana ordinance that we're working on right now. Apparently, there's a provision in the state statute that allows for six marijuana plants per individual to be grown in the primary residence, three mature, three immature plants. And so there's also another provision called the caregiver provision, that through a lot of convoluted, moving through some loopholes, you could technically get 99 plants growing in one location, which is the size of some commercial grows. And so we're trying to avoid having that in our residential areas, and we're trying to make sure that if it does happen, that it's at least regulated. And that is currently a state law, and so we have to make sure that we follow the state law and don't open ourselves up to a lawsuit. So that's essential, what we're working on with that.
Good summary. Thank you. Any further questions?
Is there anything else you want to talk about?
No, I was going to keep mine really short, since I'm kind of going out of turn this time. Just really, the big thing, just wanted to let you know, when, as I went into surgery, we also, Mike Sanchez also went into surgery, had both knees replaced at the same time. So he's doing well. He's actually up, walking, moving around. So we're looking forward to getting to him back, but he's going to be out for a while. His next doctor visit isn't until the 10th of December, and then they'll decide what they're going to do. So he's out for a while. So we're wishing him a speedy recovery and kind of opening up, see if you guys have any questions for me for my October report. I'll have a full report for you guys next council meeting.
Thank you for the full report that's in the packet tonight.
Oh, no problem. The only thing on this that you might see is, you might see RMS going around some of the areas that they've already worked during the summer and tearing things back out, and those are issues that, they're at the punch list stage right before the final. So they're just correcting a few errors, broken concrete, some of those type things, patches that we weren't very happy with. So they're just going back and touching things up so we get a really quality project at the end. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ross. So Kids Connection has been super crazy. The kids, I feel like our kids have been on like a sugar high all month long, so it's been very interesting for the staff. October numbers have been pretty consistent, above 55 every day. We hit 72 on Wednesday of last week, so we've got a lot of them coming in. Today was a really, really slow day. We only had like 19 kids throughout the whole evening, because Bill Metz didn't have school, so we just had our marsh kids and our middle schoolers later on. I was busy with a bunch of trainings and the collaboration summits that I attended in October. The big one was the SLV Collaboration Summit. Made some new friends in nonprofits that I didn't know existed, and hopefully we'll have some new programs starting with those other organizations who happen to have grant funds, and they just need the kids to use the money on, and I have the kids. So we'll have a lot of things coming out of that collaboration summit, hopefully in the next year, along with a bunch of staff training, and the list is never-ending. It's a really amazing program coming up. I started up with the Rio Grande Prevention Partners meetings again. The county department of public health has received a grant for drug and alcohol abuse prevention, and so Kids Connection is jumping back in it to see where we can help out and get the messages across to our kids and just support them any way that they need our support. I've also attended the Holiday Festival meetings. Kids Connection will be doing Santa's Workshop, as well as helping organize a window decorating contest for all the businesses in town, and a family build-a-snowman contest. We're trying to encourage families to come to Kids Connection.
we also, Mike Sanchez also went into surgery, had both knees replaced at the same time. So he's doing well. He's actually up, walking, moving around. So we're looking forward to getting to him back, but he's going to be out for a while. He's, next doctor visit isn't until the 10th of December, and then they'll decide what they're going to do. So he's out for a while. So we're wishing him a speedy recovery and kind of opening it up, see if you guys have any questions from me for my October report. I'll have a, a full report for you guys next council meeting.
Thank you for the full report that's in the packet tonight.
Oh, no problem. The only thing on this that you might see is, you might see RMS going around some of the areas that they've already worked during the summer and tearing things back out. And those are issues that, they're, they're at the punch list stage right before the final. So they're just correcting a few errors, broken concrete, some of those type things, patches that we weren't very happy with. So they're just going back and touching things up so we get a really quality project at the end. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ross.
So Kids Connection has been super crazy. The kids, I feel like our kids have been on like a sugar high all month long. So it's been very interesting for the staff. October numbers have been pretty consistent, above 55 every day. We hit 72 on Wednesday of last week. So we've got a lot of them coming in. Today was a really, really slow day. We only had like 19 kids throughout the whole evening because Bill Metz didn't have school, so we just had our Marsh kids and our middle schoolers later on. I was busy with a bunch of trainings and the collaboration summits that I attended in October. The big one was the SLV Collaboration Summit. Made some new friends in nonprofits that I didn't know existed and hopefully we'll have some new programs starting with those other organizations who happen to have grant funds and they just need the kids to use the money on. And I have the kids. So we'll have a lot of things coming out of that collaboration summit, hopefully in the next year, along with a bunch of staff training and the list is never ending. It's a really amazing program coming up. I started up with the Rio Grande Prevention Partners meetings again. The County Department of Public Health has received a grant for drug and alcohol abuse prevention. And so Kids Connection is jumping back in it to see where we can help out and get the messages across to our kids and just support them any way that they need our support. I've also attended the Holiday Festival meetings. Kids Connection will be doing Santa's Workshop as well as helping organize a window decorating contest for all the businesses in town and a family build a snowman contest. We're trying to encourage families to come to Kids Connection the night of December 2nd, from 6 to 8, and build a snowman with your kids, just have some fun time with the kids as a family and possibly win some prizes. And I'm still working on the prizes, but we'll come up with something fancy for that. I also attended an El Palmar Regional Council Collaboration Meeting and that was basically the, regional council members from the El Palmar Foundation came together to find out from the nonprofits that they've supported so far in the valley, what they need help with and where they could better send money to us. So hopefully, we gave them a lot of feedback and we will be getting some more collaboration with El Palmar in the coming years. Let's see. I also, and this is the best part, Alpine Achiever Initiative out of Sawatch has a grant that they received to work with AmeriCorps volunteers. And they have placed AmeriCorps volunteers in five different places throughout the valley. Monavista School District actually receives a good handful of those members. They needed some extra hours during the after-school hours and so they are sending us. Right now, I have five volunteers. I will have an additional one once he is finished with helping with, I think, high school basketball is where he's volunteering. But they are rotating on a monthly basis. I get two every day after school and then one additional one every Friday. So it's a lot of fun to have extra hands and volunteers that need the hours and have to show up to, to get their hours. So we're having a lot of fun with them. I don't think they realize that we have different kids when they walk out of that classroom. They're seeing some unique personalities coming out of kids that they didn't know they had. So it's a lot of fun. And the construction is still moving along. We're on a really tight schedule. We had a construction meeting this morning. Bob Van Iwerden assured us he would do his best to make that deadline. It might be just the last finishing touches on the building the week that we're trying to move in. But right now, I know the heating and ventilation went in last week. We're supposed to have heat running this weekend. The electrical services, I believe, have been wired. They just need to be switched over to the new panels. We have walls and insulation, tape and texture should be done this weekend, and they will start putting paint on the walls beginning Monday. So I've just been spending this week pancake, picking out paint colors and all of the finishing touches for the building. And that, it's a lot harder than it sounds because they gave me this stack of about 20,000 paint samples and I've been stressing out about it, but then I was just like, Skittles. And that's exactly where I found my inspiration from. So if you guys have any questions for me?
Just one clarification on the build the snowman for the public. So we're not actually going to use snow. Our theme this year is a glimpse at Christmas future, so we're kind of going futuristic theme. So the idea is for families to develop this futuristic snowman that you're going to construct and we're going to do some practical prizes.
Yeah. And we will have a bunch of really random supplies. We're looking for extra donations of anything that you would think someone would like to make a snowman out of. So if anyone has extra craft supplies or anything I thought they don't know what to do with, you can send them our way and we will make a snowman out of them some way.
I want that.
Yeah. Thank you.
I mean, we have some surprise.
Good evening. How are you all doing? Just like, like I always start with my report, just to try to catch up with the last report that I have. And I'm going to start with the pre-PEW programs. With football, last day was the October 15th and that's what we call their, well, it was actually the 22nd, the last game, but we had our game day here on the 15th, which all the schools came and participated in our, kind of like a big tournament. We planned it for about a month and then the last hour, it just all came down like, teams wanted to move times because of the travel and, and then, so I, it really didn't go the way I expected it to go. Everybody was okay with it, but I, me personally, it was like, could have been better. But we are planning to make some changes for next year, hopefully make it better. Instead of having two locations, which I thought it was going to be good to do, I think we're just going to have it all in one place, one big game day and, and go that way and see how that works out. Let's see, the end of the season, it was good. The, the good thing, I still had to meet with all the directors from, from the other towns about football season, but what I've been hearing is the, the percentage of kids getting hurt during the season, it went down dramatically. We didn't have a lot of injuries, we didn't have a lot of broken bones and stuff like that was minor. And so that was one of the biggest things that we were trying to focus on, on taking care of our kids and protecting them. And so by hearing that, I think it was a good thing, we're doing something right. And I think mostly it comes to our officials that are there in the game and are, you know, are keeping an eye on that. So, and that would be Tony and all the other guys that we hire. So they did a good job. Also, on the equipment, we, we got 90, I would say 95% of our equipment back that we hand out. We still have a few people that we've been trying to contact. We need the equipment back. We haven't heard from them. So we sent out letters today with payment. If you don't receive this by this time, you're required to pay this amount. So hopefully, we get them back. It's only like three or four. But the guys did a good job. We set up a day and they were here and they were collecting everything, they were marking everything else. So that's good. Our girls' basketball season started the end of September and we already have through the season. I saw a good increase in kids participating. We had, like I said, we had four teams for 5th and 6th grade and two teams for 3rd and 4th and then two teams for the pre-K and kindergarten. So hopefully, those numbers keep coming, increasing. As far as the budget and uniforms, I mentioned last time that we were just buying uniforms and getting them back and reusing them. And that is going to save us as far as on our budget and not be spending everything. I know there was a few parents that didn't want to return the football jerseys. They actually ended up paying for the price, but we ended up losing. We actually ended up gaining on, on that. And so we can always replace them with that. So, and we also send out those invoices to them for that, too. The Sky High, we'll be, this last month of October was kind of a busy month for the Sky High. There was a lot of rentals. There were, we had six, seven different rentals. And so the guys and I were busy on that, getting the, the building ready and, you know, cleaned up and ready for the next event. There were some expenses that we had to do just to keep the maintenance and keep it up to, you know, kind of appealing to the renters. So, but all of that is going good and hopefully, I think we're making some changes as far as procedures for renting the location and hopefully we're in better communication on that and I think it's going to work out, too. I also been attending meetings with, one with the Christmas Fest and trying to get the recreations more involved in that part. So I think we're, we're getting there. Still attending meetings monthly with other directors around that we participate with as far as PEW programs. And I got involved a little bit on the, with the Rio Grande Prevention Partners. And when they came and talked to me, I think it was a good idea for the Recreation Department to get involved in that, just because it deals with the prevention of keeping our kids out of situations where they don't supposed to be. And so our goal is to get those kids in a safe environment. So I, I think this was a good fit for us and so I'm starting to attend those meetings. And like they mentioned for the Christmas Fest, you know, we're organizing, we're working along with Kids Connection with the snowmen. And I sent out some letters on Friday to different businesses around Monavista, just asking for donations, like any kind of material that they use and do they have there in the backyard, you know, that we can use. So, and I think we got a call from one of them already?
Big Art.
From Big Art. And so I still have to go and get it. Probably go in tomorrow and pick it up. So that's what we want, community involvement and bringing families together. So little steps, but big plan. So, so we're hoping for. Let's see, I just don't want to miss anything. Okay. If you guys remember, we had the Pump, Pass and Kick and I had mentioned we had 20 kids participating on that. Three of those, three of those kids that participated here move on to sectionals in Pueblo. And then one of them actually won in his division. And he just waiting for results because after they participated in Pueblo, then they're waiting for all the winners from, let's see, from all the other sectionals hosted in Wyoming, Utah, Kansas, Montana, and in Colorado. And then they're going to top the, they're going to take the top out of those, including the kid that won there in Pueblo. And then the top one is going to move in to play at the Broncos game on the December 18th, I believe. And so I'm going to give the parent a call to see if he move on. His name is, I had it here. Where is he? Logan, Fruit Trail. Yes, he, he's the one, the one in his division. And so it'll be exciting if he get, get to move on. So I'll check on him and see how it goes. And last but not least, last meeting, as Mr. Johnson was talking about the ice rink, I think it was an opportunity for recreations to get involved, too, and maybe bring it up, see about starting a hockey team within Monavista and see how that works out. I mean, we're not going to go and shoot out and say, yeah, let's make a league and have a team and compete, but I'm just going to put it out there and see how, what the turnout is. I've been contacting a few people to help us maybe if we get enough kids to teach them the fundamentals. One of them is Mr. Chawak here, Joe. And hopefully, we can get those kids ready and if we get a good turnout, maybe start a team and, and compete with Alamosa. And I think Ganison has a team and so other areas around here. Pagosa, I believe, has a team. So it will be a good, another new event to come to our city. So I think so far, that's all I have. And if you guys have any questions for me or concerns, we would gladly to answer.
Can you, do you know off the top of your head what day they're doing the pickleball games out at Marsh Park?
No, I haven't heard much about that yet. I know I had to contact, I can't remember his name. What is his name? Mike?
Thursdays and Saturdays.
Had a few people ask about, because they actually were just curious and they want to learn, you know, they...
Yeah.
They said, well, they're, they're playing games, but I can't remember what day.
I think it's Saturday, 10 to 1 or something like that.
Okay. I can contact them and get the information and maybe post it on our Facebook and on our city page. So I will do that.
I did have a thank you card. It was sent to my office, so, but the tennis court people thanked us for the resurcicing and, you know, we're very appreciative of you guys hardworking with it and doing it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. You guys have a good night.
Excuse me, Mayor, can I ask one thing in the council real quick?
Sure.
Since I said earlier. So I sent the council an email, must have been earlier this week. There's a proposal to have a joint meeting with South Forks Town Board, Del Norte, our council and the commissioners on Wednesday, December 7th. It'd be at 6:00 PM at the Rio Grande County Annex. And I think there's some good opportunities. Obviously, one of the discussions, so I, I think I had that in the email, but we have the managers group that meets and we also, Ronnie Wisdom was in on that from the county. And part of the discussion was there's a few issues that are very common. And Del Norte is having an election on marijuana. So, you know, their town manager was interested, one, in the work that we're talking about on just the existing things that we have, personal growth and medical providers. Also, an opportunity to talk about the Economic Development Summit that's upcoming and the Rec Department, since we have all the commissioners and all the communities represented. So does that look like it'll work for the majority of you? Okay, I will, I will RSVP for us that, I think it's a good opportunity and it's probably something we should do a couple times a year. So, great, thank you.
Hello, how are you all? Alrighty. I'm going to try to make this as exciting and short as possible. So I just wanted to give you a quick little update. Currently with the Economic Development Assistance Policy, it's been moving slowly but surely. I'm in the process of two draft applications and hopefully in the future, there's three other businesses that are interested in applying. So it is moving forward. One of the researches I am here to talk to you today is moving forward with public engagement and really reaching out to the community. From some of the trainings that I received through Downtown Colorado and the Orton Foundation and other literature that I've been catching up myself and the resources that Forrest has provided, I've been seeing that a lot of the successful towns that have moved forward, really branding their town and moving forward and engaging the citizens, it's by creating something similar to like a grassroots. Really giving citizens an opportunity to have some ownership for visions, goals of the city. So really getting to know what they want. For example, like what do they value? Where do they see Monavista going? Where do they want it to go? And keep the conversation going and not so much a committee or a commission type way or task force, but a little bit more of an informal meeting where they can just come out, talk, we can jot down their ideas and from there, see what either short-term goals or long-term goals we can come up with. Some of the research that I've been doing and some ways that we can accomplish this is just by creating some, again, not so, some more informal, almost, trying to come up with a good word, like work sessions where citizens could just really come out, talk, say what they want to, what they want to see moving forward, what plans, what projects do we want to see? And see how we in the city can partner with them and collaborate and help them, give them some resources, but also have those citizens be empowered and take ownership for their projects. So no, the city didn't do this for us. We, us and the city did this. We moved forward. So I guess I just wanted to get like your permission, or I'm not sure how to word it, of really moving forward with this idea of mine and hopefully setting up some meetings in the near future and inviting again, oh, sorry, one thing I forgot to mention. After our marketing seminar in September, several council members and citizens from the Adams Street Business District really were talking about some complaints and some conversations they wanted to have, but they didn't really know the appropriate place to do it and be comfortable in doing them. So I think one of the first meetings that I would set up right away is a meeting inviting owners from the empty buildings, current businesses in that area. Some of our chamber members and of course, council to maybe have those conversations and get in an informal way so everybody can get their ideas out there and move forward and start out with that. And at the end, so I had any questions? All right. Well, thank you.
Sunday, I, my husband and I went out to the Sky High Park and walked through the gun show. I hope to never see that many guns again. Lots of guns, but there were quite a few people out there looking. I don't know about buying, but a lot of lookers and it was interesting. I was glad to see the big turnout for Rotary. I'm assuming it was a money-making arrangement.
Pretty much so. It was very successful on our part. And Rotary did want to convey thanks to the city for, you know, it's the first time that there's been a gun show in the city for a long time.
you know, it was the first time that there's been a gun show in the city in a long time. And there was really good support from the police department and. Oh, listen, I'm a citizen. Okay, that's what I said.
Mr. Renshaw, my.
No, I'm going that way.
It's where, me, it's a naked.
Anyway, it was very successful.
And I did want to share with everyone a letter that I received from the public, or from the county Public Health Nurse. She says, "I wanted to share some powerful data with all of you. As some of you may recall, around 2012, the San Luis Valley Area Health Education Center convened a group of local doctors, pharmacists, et cetera, in a narcotics committee to find a way to control the abuse of prescription drugs in our region. This group came together strongly and came up with a couple of regional practices to control abuse. Now we have the data to show this was successful. A 22% decrease in controlled substance prescribing over the last four years. This is a huge success and I wanted to make sure it was shared. Prescription drug abuse is still an issue and there is a high likelihood that some of this success led to our increased use of heroin. Yet the fact that our community could pull together to make an impact on one issue shows that we have the ability to continue change. Thank you for your continued support and voice around these issues and please continue to share thoughts and concerns." Thank you.
Thank you.
I attended a meeting with the school board on Wednesday. I think that that relationship has been continuing to develop and there's a lot of good ideas back and forth that have been floated around and I think as long as we can keep that up, it's going to be a good, it's going to be a good thing. We discussed the Kids Connection, we discussed the bonfire, which obviously was a big, big success and they were very pleased with how, not only the turnout, but the organization behind that, so we definitely want to keep that up and, and keep that going in years to come. The, I attended the Moonlight Madness on, last week and that was very, very well-attended. It was, it was a great event, there was a lot of people out. I thank the business owners that participated in that, I think it was a good showing and also all the costumes were really good. I got to judge some costume competitions, so that was also very, very fun. So it's good to see the community out and about in the town. The only point that I got brought up was wondering if we could maybe block off Adams Street so that that way the kids, as they're going back and forth, have a little bit more free access, I guess, and not have to worry about the cars coming back and forth and to be able to do that for next year. And that's all I got.
Thank you.
Well, there's a lot of things going on, but Pringfest has started meeting again, they're committing, working on putting that together for next spring, so that's always exciting for me to see that because it's a big, it's a big thing that our community does and it's such a unique thing and I always like to see that planning and of course, the holiday festivals coming up, so that planning's going on as well, a lot of things going on. I also attended the gun show that was put on by the Rotary. It was very, I was very impressed. I've seen gun shows in heavier populated areas with far less vendors and far less attendance, so I think it was well-done, well-organized and really liked how it was all put together, so it's a good, definitely a successful venture. So that's all I got.
Yeah, I visited with Vernon Keith's, we, this middle school group that I work with raising money to go to Washington. We were out there selling gun raffle tickets and so we did very well, we sold 52 raffle tickets just at the event and, and Vernon Keith did, did say all the vendors there expressed interest in coming back again. They were all very happy and very successful event, he said, so that's, that's positive for this community. We could have more events in the, at that caliber all the time, it'd be amazing. So also you have in front of you your, the monthly financials for the Valley 3 Theater. So here to date, they have a $27,651, 50 cent balance in their account. So it seems to be holding its own, staying steady and I think they have some exciting things coming up for the holiday festivals, we'll stay with that. Oh, a workshop? Are we, are we doing a workshop this morning?
We could talk a little bit about doing a liquor license-afraid training and I think I would like to wait until we have a new clerk on board before I do that for council so everybody's on the same page. And we're planning to start recruiting efforts next week. So probably it will be December, or maybe January, that's what we were talking about.
It might be better up at the holidays.
We'll, we'll find a good time to make work.
So is there another topic perhaps for us that you can think would be?
Nothing that comes to my mind right now, Madam Mayor.
We'll, we'll email everyone and let you know for sure if there's a workshop. And then this, next Saturday, not this coming Saturday, but next Saturday, the 12th, is our Veterans Parade and Tribute. Parade starts at 10:00 AM, it'll be the same parade courses last year, it'll go down second to Adams, head south to third, take third west, all the way to Davis, Davis? And head north back to the Veterans Park for a memorial tribute. I think we might be actually maybe showing some signs of a little more progress on the park at that point, right? We, are we about to break ground on the bathrooms? We're about to break ground on the bathrooms and begin the next phase of that project, so we're pretty excited about that. We have Senator Larry Crowder speaking at the tribute, so we hope you all make it. If there's nothing else, do we have a motion to go into executive?
I apologize, I completely forgot to bring one part up that I was wanting to bring up. I had a brief discussion with city manager, city clerk and Council Martinez about looking at, maybe doing some alternative training next year versus just using our entire budget to go to CML. And so I just wanted to bring it up to the rest of council and see how the rest of council feels about maybe looking at some different sources, maybe even doing some trainings here where we collaborate with the different municipalities and communities through the valley. I've seen a lot of collaboration happening these, this past year and I think that we always tend to have better things when we work together and so I was just wondering if the rest of council would be interested in something along those lines and wanted to bring it up.
Did you have something specific in mind at this point or just doing something training-wise but not necessarily CML?
Well, per the conversation with clerk, we talked about maybe putting together a grocery list, so to speak, shopping list of some type that we can take a look at the list of what's available and then going, well, this is really what we need, is kind of what I had in mind.
Okay. So the work I'm, I'm, I also listed all options.
We did some things together, probably for your, your, after the first of the year would be the appropriate time to, first of the year. Our conversation really centered around something that is relevant to you, where if you go to a bigger event, it may or may not be as relevant. And I certainly would not rule out CML options, but this could be an addition or instead of.
Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Move to go into executive session pursuant to CRS Section 24-60-4024B. I adjournment positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and ensharking negotiators.
Second.
Your discussion? Judy.
Schrader.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Lorenz.
Aye.
Schleewall.
Aye.
Garcia.
Aye.
Motion carries on. We'll take a short little recess and we'll be back here in five minutes.